Acceptable, the sun's out, put it that way, the wind is cold.
Wait till the weekend.
Yeah, well, if you're coming back, you're coming back to snow heads up.
I'll come back tomorrow, I think I'm flying around midnight, there's no snow tomorrow.
Uh, they're saying what Saturday and Monday, I think.
Sunday, Monday.
Well, it should be fun.
Hey, it's been a rough week.
Alright, I'm gonna get this hooked up to stream, so I'll mute us for a couple minutes and then come back.
No, please look at.
I.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have to do everything roll call for it.
You are correct. Alright, any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
We have one, we're gonna add the ACO on to new business.
We want to talk about.
And. We can, yep.
We're adding ACO. And what?
Veterans monument.
The veterans monument.
I thought he was gonna be here.
Let me make him up with a couple more before we're done. Alright, approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on February twenty seven, twenty twenty five.
Approve as red.
I have a motion to approve as red with a second. And we'll do roll call votes tonight, we have Christine on Zoom, Sean.
Just don't say yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I vote yes, Christine.
Abstain.
Three yes, one abstain.
Yes, motion.
Motion passes. Alright, onto old business, um, we can strike A, that item has been removed from the agenda. Um, and we're going to B, AFCO.
Either April or maybe.
We want her to zoom in to a meeting.
Alright, any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
We have one, we're gonna add the ACO on to new business.
We want to talk about.
And. Weekend, yep.
We're adding ACO. And what?
Veterans monument.
The veterans monument.
I thought he was gonna be here.
Let me make him up with a couple more before we're done. Alright, approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on February twenty seven, twenty twenty five.
Approve as red.
I have a motion to approve as red with a second. And we'll do roll call votes tonight, we have Christine on Zoom, Sean.
Just don't say yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I vote yes, Christine.
Abstain.
Three yes, one abstain.
Yes, motion.
Motion passes. Alright, on to old business, um, we can strike A, that item has been removed from the agenda. Um, and we're going to B, AFCO.
What day will you be invited to the meeting and where to zoom in on the April? Either April or maybe.
The lady from AFCO, what date? We want her to zoom in to a meeting. The meeting dates are the thirteenth and the tenth seventh, no, I'm looking at March.
No, tenth of the twenty fourth. Um. Probably the. Leaning on the twenty fourth, oh no, because I'm not in town that week, nevermind, um. That'll be a late night, we'll do budget that night too.
I turn this one.
Alright, we can start the meeting off by standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright.
We have to do everything roll call for it.
You are correct. Alright, any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
We have one, we're gonna add the ACO on to new business.
We want to talk about.
And. We can, yep.
We're adding ACO. And what?
Veterans monument.
The veterans monument.
I thought he was gonna be here.
Let me make him up with a couple more before we're done. Alright, approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on February twenty seven, twenty twenty five.
Approve as red.
I have a motion to approve as red with a second. And we'll do roll call votes tonight, we have Christine on Zoom, Sean.
Just don't say yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I vote yes, Christine.
Abstain.
Three yes, one abstain.
Yes, motion.
Motion passes. Alright, on to old business, um, we can strike A, that item has been removed from the agenda. Um, and we're going to B, AFCO.
What day will you be invited to the meeting and where to zoom in on the April? Either April or maybe.
The lady from AFCO, what date? We want her to zoom in to a meeting. The meeting dates are the thirteenth and the tenth seventh, no, I'm looking at March.
No, tenth of the twenty fourth. Um. Probably the. Leaning on the twenty fourth, oh no, because I'm not in town that week, nevermind, um. That'll be a late night, we'll do budget that night too. Well, I didn't know, either that or we could pick and just do it on a different, pull the separate meeting for it maybe.
Why are you doing budget on that night?
The selectmen of the, the selectmen.
I was thinking, yeah, final warrant.
Oh, no, I was leaning on having the selectmen work on their budget numbers that night, but.
Sorry about that.
Um. Yeah, like I said, um. Yeah, I'm pretty sure I'll be gone the week of the twenty first, so.
I, I'll have to ask her, she, she said she's available.
And if not, maybe we could do an additional meeting, say like the week of the twenty eighth.
I don't wanna ask her for a date.
Yep. Yep.
And the other thing. If, if anybody has any questions that they need to know, I should have Kathy, we could.
Try to get them ahead of time.
Yeah, but she'll have an answer, so we don't go back and forth.
Mm-hmm.
If that's good for you guys.
So, we'll, uh, wait for you to get some date back from her and then we can see about having her come in. Um.
She's, she personally better, but she sent some.
Okay, and we have to, we have to, it's fine. Um, the other thing we have from AFCO that we need to do is, uh, we have the official ballot. For using casting our vote for the election of the AFCO officers. Um, we need to vote for one candidate for each office. So, um, they've given us one candidate for each office, or we can have a write-in.
I vote Brian, I motion me vote with who they got listed.
Okay. I have a motion to go with the proposed slate of officers, which would be. Uh, President Shiloh from Jay, Vice President Danielle from Minnet, Treasurer Cameron from Buckfield, and Secretary of Matt from Poland.
I would second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to go with those proposed officers for AFCO, Sean.
Yes.
Carol, yes, I'm yes, and Christine?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we also need to pick a general assembly rep. If we are interested in anybody is, are. Serving as a general assembly rep, um, we are allowed to. Um. Is anybody interested?
I think Sean would be.
One is.
So, pursuant to the bylaws of AFCO, the nominating committee has prepared a slate of officers, which the department just did. Um, general assembly appointment information, municipal officers of each municipality shall annually appoint two representatives to the general assembly. Uh, determined by the last sentences, each member of county shall be entitled to two reps. Uh, general assembly roles, uh, general assembly is made up of representatives from each member municipality. Meetings are held semi-annually to discuss progress of AFCO's activities, goals, and elect officers. This is also a forum to receive input on the work plan, including goals, objectives, and strategies. The spring general assembly meeting is typically held sometime in April, and the fall held in late October or early November in conjunction with AFCO's planning day. And we don't have to do anybody, but if anybody's interested, it's here.
That would be a part of that.
Until tomorrow, we may have.
But we will. We'll hold with that, I will. Pass that back down, so I don't.
We'll be back in.
Oh, I feel bad. Sorry, my bad. Election worker list.
Where'd my list go? I apologize. Oh, right here, um, by state law, which we did not realize, we have to have a list of. Election workers just signed off, we did it last year as well, but this one has to be done before April first. So we have a list of various people who are interested in working multiple. Different. Elections.
Are they running background checks on them or something?
No, it's, they don't even check it, it's just the selectmen have to say, yes, we're aware of this.
Yeah. So, people on the list, um, election workers, we have Michelle Stevens, Jim Martin, Karen Timberlake, Robin Clintek, Don Frosby, Tricia Blanchard, Casey Flag, Paul McKenna, and Phyllis Willeck.
Phil's so impressed.
I talked to her today.
Go ahead.
Can I get a motion?
The motion that we accept the vote, the election worker list as red.
That's right, I have a motion by Carol, second by Sean, uh, Sean. Carol?
No, yes.
It's, I vote yes, Christine?
Yes.
Motion passes, are you kidding us, just a finalities? Eric will not be able to make it, he found it, they, he ended up in the, in the meeting. So we're striking that?
Yep. I'll pass this then, you shouldn't lose it.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, next item on the agenda, the resignation letter. So, March first, twenty twenty five, dear Brian Keane and the fellow members of the Town of Canton Select Board. It is with a heavy heart that I submit my resignation from my seat on the Town of Canton Select Board effective immediately. When I ran for this position, my goals were clear. To increase transparency, expand access to meeting for residents, encourage greater community involvement and volunteerism, always keeping the best interests of the town at the forefront. Serving the residents of our town has been an honor, and I'm forever grateful for that opportunity. Unfortunately, recent events and circumstances have diminished my effectiveness in serving in the capacity of selectmen. Therefore, I've decided to step down a few months before the conclusion of my term. I want to express my sincere appreciation to the residents of Canton for the opportunity to serve. I wish the current and future board success in their important work of serving the town, best interest of the town residents. Sincerely, Michelle Larrabee.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion.
Back in.
I have a motion in a second to accept the resignation letter, although, uh, Sean?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Uh, yes, Christine?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Second on the file?
Yes. Shredding event, document shredding.
Right, um, as you know, we're going through. Records upstairs, and there are plenty that we are finding that we can shred, we're, like I said, going through each and every box that we pull out. Um, I have asked its records management shredding on-site company for a quote, they are, they seem to be the most prominent shredding company. Um, that I've seen out there, most towns use them. We did ask for a quote on that, we also asked, well, if we're having someone come in, can we have the public come in? Um, if you look at the letter, um, I'm gonna skip to the bottom first. Is, they actually do a shredding event, which is usually a four-hour event, but it's nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, I was just thinking, can't the public come in while they're doing shredding? Um, we'll have, if we wanna do that, we'll have to figure out how we want to, whether we. Take it in on a day before they come or whatever, um, but back at the top, you can see their, their pricing for a one-time purge. And it's sixty-nine dollars a bin, which typically holds, uh, two hundred pounds. Um, and then a thirty-five dollar stop fee. They, we can send pictures or let her know how many boxes we have, and that's kind of how we're repacking things is in boxes. Um. So, I'm just, I mean, we're looking to be able to get through April and probably May just to get through all the boxes we need to, uh, because we have to document each and every.
Right.
Grouping of papers that we're finding to, uh, to shred. So I wanted to put that out there to see if you wanted us to reach out to schedule a time, maybe the first part of June. To get this done.
With, I know this is probably an unanswerable question. But those boxes are holding probably forty pounds, I would say from lifting, maybe, anywhere from.
Hmm, thirty to forty?
Yeah.
I don't even think, well, they can't, I don't know if they're that much.
Some of the ones are stacked, yeah, so I'm saying they were stacked, so you're looking at max forty.
And this is a sixty. Oh.
What?
Nevermind. I was trying to do the math, but I was thinking it was sixty-four boxes, but it's not.
It's sixty-four gallons, like, holds approximately twen- two hundred pounds. Four or five by, to seven standard sized files.
You're gonna get roughly six to seven boxes.
Yeah.
Per bin.
Any idea how many boxes we're looking at?
Quite a few.
I know, I'm just trying to figure out cost-wise.
I would almost guess.
More effective for us.
Four bins, maybe, I don't know, I mean, because it's hard to say, some of those boxes have hardly anything in them, and others are packed so full that.
Yeah.
So, if we went the other route for the shredding event, you're gonna get thirteen boxes. The cost of that is roughly thirteen point seven boxes.
Boxes or bins?
But they typically do, but they do those on a Saturday.
Right, no, I was just figuring.
We're trying to figure cost effect.
Which would make more sense money-wise, either spending the nine fifty and opening it up to people in the town and doing ours.
I don't think they'd let us do ours. I think they're real, I'm just, this is a guess, but I would guess if we showed up with all of that, they'd know it's a one-time purge. Because they're shredding municipal documents.
I mean, well, indeed, I'm, I'm not arguing, I just, I'm wondering what their basis is, if they're still getting their nine fifty.
I know, I, I'm just, it's just a guess I'm making that.
I guess that would be my question, is, I guess we'd have to ask them, if, if we did the shred event, does that include our town materials as well?
I can.
Not just the public's materials, would that include our shreddage, right?
I can ask, I can send that to Jess.
Because I think money-wise. It almost makes sense to, if it does, it almost makes sense to spend the nine hundred and fifty bucks and have them come in and do a shredding event.
But.
But.
But I don't think, I don't think it would be though, because if we did four bins, that's two hundred and, say, three hundred dollars, so it'd be like three thirty-five. You said a box, a, a bin would hold. Five or six boxes?
Uh, it says five to seven.
We got close to thirty boxes in there right now.
So you're seven bins.
Seven times sevens, four hundred and.
Let's say you're seven, then you're.
Math, hard. Uh, there's not many, there's not many more upstairs.
Right, the shredding event, yeah, so, it didn't make any difference whether it's.
Right.
But, I, I don't think it'll make any difference, I, I think it's nine hundred and fifty bucks to have them come and throw whatever we throw at them up to, till the truck's full.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a lot of paper.
But I don't think, there's not many more boxes upstairs.
Right.
There might be. Nine or ten?
Up in the first paragraph, boys, it's sixty-nine dollars, then filled, and they thirty-five dollars stop, is that for a band?
That's a good question.
I'm gonna guess.
I think it's a one-time stop.
It should be a one-time stop, but I. Don't know on that one.
You couldn't afford to do that, that for a band?
No.
Now that'd be crazy.
Yeah, no, that would be a lot.
Yeah, I don't, I would say it's one time.
Right, yeah.
I can ask that.
Yeah, so if you could find.
Heck, because if that's the case, then you're, you figured six or seven bins, you're seven hundred bucks.
If we were to do the shredding event, would we be necessarily reaching out to say clinical or whatever and?
I would put it in the crier and say, hey, we're gonna have a shredding event on this day, anybody that wants to bring stuff, feel free.
First come, first served, but we're going first.
Well, yeah, and that would be the thing, maybe, we've got, you know, capacity of eight thousand pounds and.
The problem with that is, the next part goes out, we're actually almost ready to print.
Mm-hmm.
So.
See how quick you can get the answer.
Yeah. I mean, because we can. Yeah.
This is a decision we can make.
Yeah.
On the fly.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not something that would have to be voted on, it's.
Can you like, if they say from one to four, can you, that's what time they come, can you say like, okay, for public is two to four? And the town office gets a first.
That or one thirty, and then we just put everything out there at once and say, here's all our stuff, and then.
But what yours, the town, crap that first?
Right.
Yeah.
But, like I said, they only do Saturdays for the public events, so.
Yep.
Apparently, it's kind of where I was going with that.
Uh, we'll have to see.
Okay.
I, I think the key thing is, will they, I imagine they will, but my read of it is that they'll bring the truck and we have up to eight thousand pounds, but. I think we'll just need a clarification around that, and.
Alright, I will reach out to her tomorrow, um. I'll send an email, okay, info and email. Perfect.
Ask for the office staff.
You all have, um, in your binder, it's a little bit of a summary. Aaron and I would like to take this verbal judo class, but it would require us to close the office on a Monday and a Tuesday. Um, we haven't closed the office for trainings.
You have.
One day.
You still closed it.
And that one was permitted by law.
Right.
But.
But this is not required.
Well, it is part of the, it, it can be a requirement for our certifications, and this class is offered once a year.
I guess you know where I'm going.
I do.
I would prefer one at a time, as opposed to closing the office.
I have no input on the closing, but I think it'd be awesome for all of, for everybody to take because of the way things are anymore, the verbal judo would be awesome.
We've planned a lot of webinar classes, which sometimes aren't ideal. Um, there is no option for webinar for this one. Um, it's a day and a half, it's not two full days, I mean, I realize it's, we all, we're only open until noon. Um. This is a class we've been waiting, waiting, that's one of the reasons why we have been waiting on classes, is to see if this would come available.
I'm not ignoring, sorry, I'm reading.
Oh, I don't, I'm just curious, what exactly is this, the eyes?
That's, I'm reading the description, I'm only about.
I guess the way I look at this is, I'm all, I ain't, but, I don't keep the office open Friday that evening, and Saturday you'll be working half a day.
Oh, when we do the, do the thing?
No.
Schedule, because I said they come between April.
Yeah, no, he was talking about, yeah, when we do the shredding event.
This, this is May fifth and sixth, right?
Yep.
So, schedule your shredding event, so you can be open on that Friday.
Mm-hmm.
And the Saturday, it's gonna be half a day.
Shredding event. Mm-hmm.
You follow the same?
Yeah, I follow.
Okay, if they're available and we go with that, yeah.
I mean, it doesn't have to be that same, we, that's how you handle your time.
Well, I'm gonna.
Residents.
I'm gonna stick, right, and I'm still gonna be, I mean, we get paid for the trainings anyways, so. It's just a matter of the hours, but. Right, right, then, where'd you go, Carol?
It, so.
I could do that, I guess my, my first preference would be not close the office to have it be a one-on, one-at-a-time deal. Um. But I can, I understand that they only schedule it so many times a year anyways, um. I'm not against saying, you know, swap your schedule and work on the Friday, I, I'm not against that, I.
I like, that's what I'm doing, I mean, then. Then, I'm more worried about what the public is gonna say, so I've been exposed to two days, at least we can say, well, they're gonna be open Friday and half a day Saturday.
Especially going right before town meeting, and we're going to then to vote on a budget that is.
If they're gonna make up the time to be open for public to business. Plus, we're gonna have this, hopefully, it's gonna be the nine hundred and fifty dollar deal open for the public.
Right.
So we're giving some for the residents.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that, that's my take on what, on this voice and mind.
What's your thought, Christine?
I'm hesitant to close the office, um, also. Acutely aware that we have to do these things in order to get the training done. Uh, I didn't understand or couldn't hear everything Sean was saying with regards to swapping out time, so maybe you could repeat that?
Looking at, uh, the week of the training, switching instead of being, uh, Monday and half a day Tuesday open, be open Friday a full day. Instead of being open till only noon, opening Friday a full day, and then half of a day on Saturday with the hopes that we could do the shredding event on that Saturday.
But not opening the office?
No, opening the office.
I would open the office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because both you and Aaron should be, and they got the time.
Well, yeah, but we're not losing, we're not physically losing time, you're talking.
But the town office is.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, the key is.
The thing about opening the office while the shredding event is going on is.
Yeah, but this is wrong idea.
Aaron could deal with shredding.
Okay, I just want people to know, yeah.
Or vice versa.
Vice versa, okay.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to have two people watching the shredding event, you could have one. Yeah, you wouldn't have to have two people watching the shredding event, you could have one doing that, I mean, you could do. One of you for two hours, the other one for two hours.
I was just gonna say, cause someone.
Back and forth.
Someone needs to have eyes on the stuff as, you know, but. I, if if you are a hundred percent against. Both of us going. I will send Aaron, but.
Well, I think that, I think that still gets you training, what you guys, I'm, I I'm all for all training, you guys, and I've raised that concern before. This is just a way of giving the training, plus even.
Yep, I would have to honest, I would have to also put it before Aaron, I mean, he has to agree to, I can't commit him to. Days he's not, you know, I don't even know what he has planned those week, that, that time, but. If that's an option, we will, we will discuss it and look at it and.
Include that in your email tomorrow, but.
So, so I guess it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, consensus would be that. We're okay with it as long as we could swap over and do a full day Friday and a half day, or the four hour time on Saturday.
Correct.
Of that week.
I would be interested to see. A copy of the cash receipts that they, on if we do it on a Saturday as well, to see if that happens to be a hit. I'm just curious. But don't give me that lot.
I think it would be interesting, but that's, we've danced around it before.
Yeah.
That's a good point, and I don't know when you're crying, it's too long, but you don't have to schedule this trading event. In May, you don't have to, I mean, they got April till October, it says here that they're running shredding.
Oh, so you're talking open the week, well, see, but the problem is, is.
Well, I don't see any problem.
No. No, no, it's the scheduling, but you want us to be, oh, you want us to do it the same week we take the class?
That's what I'm saying, you don't.
Oh, okay.
They booked for May, so we couldn't do it in May anyways.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that we run events through April to October.
Right.
So, i- if they decide they wanna do it, take these classes and make up the two days for the townspeople.
Right, you can switch.
They they can schedule it when they run Friday, to put it in the Friday, that we're gonna be open Friday. And Saturday, half a day.
Well, we would wanna get it done.
Right, I'm saying.
During this prior.
Yeah, we can't do it until June anyways, but the looks of that email, but. Right.
Why are you saying June?
Because the, the letter says they're booked for April and May. The very last.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Currently booked for April and May of this year.
Okay, I'm pa- I apologize, I missed that.
So, when is the next crack? No, I'm not talking cry, I'm already, when did it not?
July.
Should be, would be after. Unless we did one, we did an additional before town meeting. Which we have done before too.
I mean, this is all.
Okay, you know what, all we need right now is that she's gonna discuss with Aaron, the possibility of.
X, Y.
Working that week.
Mm hmm. Yeah, like I say, we have consensus that.
Just verification, so what you're saying is that if Aaron, um. Doesn't want to do the makeup time, neither one of you are gonna go to the class, because if you decide to go to the class, because he doesn't wanna work those other days. He can just be working the regular days and he's right out of the office.
Right, the, the, the flip side of that is, when it comes to the certification, yes, that helps my certification. But because of my prior graduation, I know the words N C mean nothing, it's clerks, it's Clerks College. Um, because I already have that. You need so many points to be certified, I have more points than he does, so I would send him. And I will wait the year if I have to, so.
All right.
But in, in reality, that doesn't matter, if he goes to N C this summer. He would be graduating, so he'd have his.
No, he won't, it's a three year program.
Okay.
So he won't have, he won't have his I I M C certification until three years from now.
Okay.
So. So I will discuss it with Aaron and see which way we go, I will, I will still email them and set up a date. Or get the information so we can set up a date, and I will also let you guys know what we decide as far as that class.
Mm hmm.
Perfect, thank you.
Hope for new generator.
Um, the generator at the fire station, the last time they lost the power. You're gonna have to help me with this, Brian, because I don't know. Computer talk. It wasn't enough to power. The server?
See, I don't, I wasn't here, so I.
Right, I know, we, I talked to you, though, it wasn't, whatever, it's old enough that it wasn't enough juice to power something to do with the computers.
But other stuff in the building was running fine, right?
We only had the lights on.
Right.
We had nothing else on.
So I guess my question or concern is, did we have somebody check the generator and stuff?
Yes, we had Flanders come out and check the generator, and of course, it's old.
Right.
Um, and I don't know all of the information, I know Jason asked him to look and get a quote. So, you each have the, the write up, and I have the Generac. Model information and.
Do we know what they did when they looked at it, I guess is what I would like to.
I do not. I know that they are a lot, most pe- most people will not touch that generator because it is not a Generac. Um, they were just nice enough to come out. Especially when they found out that our fire station and our town office are warming stations.
Yeah.
They were willing to come out and look at it. Do you want that, Brian, to look at the spec stuff?
Cause really, we can't. An item of this cost, we can't vote on anyways, it has to go out to bid, so it's gonna have to go out to bid, so we'll have to build a spec sheet. And post it. Right, no, we can't say the price because it would be a unfair advantage, so. No, so what we'll have to do, we'll have to, uh, build the spec sheet and post for bids. Has to be, yep, my policy has to be minimum of three.
Okay.
And I would like to see if possible, if we could get somebody local. Cause there are at least three companies that I can think of within the two close by towns that do generator bids too.
Okay, who's gonna put the spec sheet together?
That can be the spec sheet.
Do we wanna go Generac? That seems to be what everybody wants to work on, but.
I. My thought would be, you don't build a brand into the spec.
Right.
Cause you're better off not to, when you put a bit spec out, you're better off to put in.
Generate capable of producing X amount of.
And my recommendation would be, in order to put in a bid, they have to come and look at the two locations. Because they're not, you can't truly bid on it unless you look at both buildings and see what it has to power. Cause you're powering the charging station for all the ta- the trucks. The equipment at, the multiple freezers that are over there, for the food pantry, which I think may be where. Part of our problem could be coming from, because the, when we hooked this, this building to the fire department generator. There was only one or two freezers in that room. So it was enough to cover both buildings, my question is, could that be why now? Would that be our problem, I don't know.
Is it gonna make more sense for us to have separate generators? I mean, I know that's obviously an added expense, but.
It's something we could look at. And and it, I get, that could be a question for whoever comes to evaluate the buildings. Cost wise, does it make sense to put one big one in to run both, or, I mean, then you're looking at propane tanks in both locations and things like that, but. I mean, I guess we could do a cost analysis on it and see.
Normally, what, what they did for us is, they come out, they call C M B automatically. When five minutes, they got the heat command, what you're building use, that way, they know how to size it.
Mm hmm.
And, you know, anyone else with it going, that's how they deal with it.
Yep.
Like you just said, Brian, when you get them out, it's hard, they're pleased on the site. Do you get the, so he built the fire department?
I get it, we get all of them.
So they had that account information, yeah. So, if they come here, they're all set.
Yeah, yeah, they just gotta come look at stuff and say, okay, this is what you guys need and.
Do you have recommendations of who?
Mm hmm, I can give you some names.
Okay. Brian, we'll send names.
Yep. I'll write them down before I leave.
Thank you.
All right. Strike F, please. Budget update. So, we met for the first time with the budget committee last night. Um, we had a very productive meeting, I thought, um, we got through the first group of budgets. On the budget list, um, only tabled one of them. Um, but all of them were gone through, really good questions were asked, uh. Some hard questions were asked about, could things be reduced in different places? Um, I thought the budget group did a great job. Um, we are meeting again next Wednesday, um, to go over. Um. Let me try to say the right ones, um, next week, we're doing transfer station, rec department, parks and trails, the fire department. Uh, social services, planning board, professional services, and highway.
Long it.
So it will be a lengthy evening?
Plus, we are revisiting general government.
Correct. Yeah, we will revisit a couple items in general government for next week, um. Like I say, overall, I think last night went well, um. The other P cell update is, um, we have some initial reads on where our school budget could potentially land. Um. It looks like due to increased state funding, that the town of Canton share could potentially go down. For this coming year, um, for the, what we pay towards the school budget. Um, so that is a good thing for us, um, granted, it's not finalized yet, the number, they haven't actually voted on their budget, so it could. Either go up just a little bit or down a little bit, one way or the other, but, um.
Goes up, it wasn't a huge.
Right, yeah, even if it goes up, it's a very minimal, like, one or two percent versus what we've seen in the past for the, where the windmill stuff came through. So I think it's, um. Yeah, in terms of overall funding from the town to the school, I think we're in a better place this year than what we have been for the last. Say, four years probably, um, so I think that will help us in the overall picture on our budget before we're done, but. Um. I think it will be interesting to see how things go forward.
I would encourage all residents to attend the actual budget vote and.
May twenty seventh.
Yes, May twenty second.
Yep, so there are. There are two more, um, school board meetings between now and then, um. The actual budget is going to be voted on by the school board. Make sure I have the right number, the right date here, um, on the twenty ninth of April. Um, that's when the actual budget is gonna be voted on. Because they're, uh.
Wait, the public, the, the meeting where the.
The school board vote.
Yes.
The school board is actually gonna vote to decide the figure that goes forward to the May meeting.
Right, so it is May twenty seventh.
Yes, but validation, right.
That's the validation meeting, yes.
To air your concerns would be.
Yes, yeah, if you wanna talk anymore about the budget before they actually vote, there's a meeting on April eighth. And there's also a meeting on, uh, April twenty ninth, where they'll decide on what number is going forward.
I will say that if we keep cutting the rate we're cutting, it's going to have to take a big jump at some point. Because. In my personal opinion, we're. I don't even think we're bordering on being unfair to the students, I think we are hitting that. So, my concern is, I don't wanna see taxes go up clearly, but I think we could maybe. Manage the slight bump that if they run up to the next range would be manageable. And still maintain some of the things they would like to cut.
And, uh, so at their meeting, they had asked us to come, ask board members or town representatives to go to the meeting. This week, um, this past Tuesday, um, Carol and I both went and both of us talked a little. Um, on the town side of things, um. I will say, both of our Canton members were at that board meeting for school board members, um, they were both there and both spoke as well. Um, so we have good representation on that board, um. So if you have any, if anybody has any questions or wants, needs, concerns, um. Reach out to either Carl or Natalie, and they will, uh. Yeah, yeah, or any of the selectmen, and we'll try to take that forward to the school board. Um. Okay. Uh, security cameras. So I had this on the agenda because I. We currently don't really have anything set in stone in terms of where they're at, or know where our cameras are at, because we haven't had anybody look at them for quite a while. Um, my thought is, I'd like to have somebody come in and go through them, see where we're at. With the, with cameras in each of our locations, and if they have any recommendations on. Whether or not they should be upgraded, or if they're still good, um, and just maybe need to be cleaned, things like that, regular maintenance on them. Um, I'd like to see if A three can come in and do that, um, but I was gonna check in the board and see what thoughts were. Um, we currently have them at the highway garage, here in the town office, and the transfer station. Um, the ones at the ball field are not working, um, they haven't worked for a little over a year now, um. And the ones at the fire department, excuse me, the ones at the fire department are still under contract with A D T.
No, they're not. We can.
So that was cut this year then?
Jason had me cancel that.
Oh.
Okay, cause that was paid.
It was in his.
This past year.
Yep, and he was not getting the services, and he asked for them to be. It wa- it was a long drawn out process, but he asked for them to, to cancel.
Okay.
So you took that out?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
Um, who currently, I mean, cause you said you can't get into them.
I can get into two of the systems.
Okay.
Because I installed them. The others, I don't have any knowledge of, because I wasn't involved with the installation of them. So, the highway and the transfer station, yes, we have access to. The others, I don't know.
Uh, anybody?
No.
No, that's what I think we need to do, is look at bringing somebody in and. Having that.
I know they're young, they're nice system, they're from Mexico, sort of, I don't know if you want. They are very.
Yeah. Yep, no, I'm happy to talk to anybody, um, I figure we can have a couple people come in and look at it and see.
Oh.
Yeah, cause the other thing that I would like. That we could kinda tie into that at the same time possibly would be the locks. Here in this building.
They do.
They're at the point where they almost need to be replaced, uh, pads need to be replaced. So depending on what we went with for cameras, you can tie those into that system, you can tie them to the same system and run it all off the same setup. So I think it's just something, we gotta have a couple people come in and give some quotes on and look at.
Well, it's no point having cameras up, because we don't have footage to use, and so we need to do something.
That's why I was just checking to see if everybody was okay with it, and if so, we try to reach around a few people and see if we could basically do the same. Like the generator, have some folks come in and.
Yeah.
Evaluate, I think we could.
I think it's unnecessary, you know?
We don't need to, we just need the, just the consensus thing, just to see.
Okay, catch all that, Christine?
Yeah, I think so, I think it's a great idea, especially if we're just talking about having somebody come to look, we can't even start to have a intelligent conversation about what to do. Until somebody looks.
Right.
I imagine it's not gonna cost anything for somebody to come and look.
Nope, you're correct.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Okay, all right, I'll work with Kathy and we'll get a few people contacted and see what we can do. All right, uh, on to scheduling a sewer workshop. So we talked, Rashawn had brought up possibility of seeing if you could have Mark come in and chat about sewer rates with water. Um, meter reads and stuff, so I was wondering if we could schedule a date, or try to get a date scheduled around when we might be able to do that.
Mark, who's?
Holt.
Holt. H O L T?
Yeah, Jay in Mon Falls.
Okay.
Thinking out loud if we, I think I, I'd almost rather do it, call it a work session, and then it's not part of our regular meeting, but a little easier to. Talk about how the formulas could work and things like that, and make sure we get Dave in the room at the same time, and just kinda throw ideas around and.
Right, it's a good place to start. It's not gonna happen.
Right.
Looking at this list, we gotta do something.
So I was kinda leaning towards sometime in May. Um.
May is better for May.
Okay. Um.
Starting your budget meeting is gonna be done?
Yeah.
Yes, budget meeting, the goal is to have that all tied up by April fifteenth. That way, we're done in plenty of time for, um.
Review.
Yes, review and getting ready for the warrants and all that kinda stuff, yeah. So I mean, I, the week of like. Our meeting would be the eighth, um. We can either do something a different night that week, or maybe the week after that.
Which week are you in, Brian?
Uh, either the week of May fifth or May twelve. Uh, either the week of May fifth or May twelve.
I can do the week of the fifth. Or the week of the twelfth.
Sometime first week's night, hopefully.
Okay. Do you just wanna reach out to Mark and see what his schedule would be those times and, okay. Yeah, yeah, if he can pick a couple days or a couple evenings, I mean, then we can. Run those by the rest of the board and just double check the date and pick which one works best and. Okay. Perfect. Warrant workshop. Since we have to start working on the town meeting warrant, even though Kathy's already started um, but. We probably should pick a night to sit down for a little bit and talk about what we want on the town meeting warrant or what we need on the warrant. Um. And then also just start running through numbers and stuff um. Our final numbers, I should say um. Usually we have to vote and sign the or sign the official warrant the last meeting in May. Which would be the twenty second.
Twenty ninth.
Oh, that's another.
I'm sorry.
That's a long week. Yeah, that's a long week or a long month, I should say. See, I know it'll be the twenty second. So. How about? Monday, May twelve.
I was gonna say, I don't wanna push a rate to the very end.
No, cuz if we have to add a question that needs legal.
Yes.
Review, we probably should make sure we leave a week.
Yeah, I'm just gonna tell you, I'm out of the office from the fourteenth to the twentieth. So. I don't know if that matters to you.
If we did it the twelfth, you're still.
I'm there, but as far as if anything needs to be changed. Legal, I know, but I'm just. Putting it out there so you know.
Is everybody available the twelfth at say five o'clock?
Yeah, it works for me.
Well, that's off the budget table on the sewer.
Well, not necessarily cuz we could meet warrant five to six and then do.
You never, we never get done in an hour, you know that.
Can I ask one question as far as the warrant goes? I know we were discussing and you guys will discuss at the budget, social services. I've contemplated because of the way it always goes. It'll be a lot of questions, but what if we put each social service on the line?
Yeah, you mentioned that last night.
Because then it's a yes or no.
Not to you.
I don't know. I'll think about that.
Or put the new ones. That we've never done. Regular ones.
So we, we keep. Two of them in their own article anyways. Because the veterans home and the library are in their own article anyways.
Yeah, there was three in there last year.
Yeah, I can't remember what the third is.
No.
No, they didn't get.
There's one or two, there's a few that we keep in their own article anyway, so I would say leave that one probably by itself. And then. I don't know what the others.
People just made so many changes that I can tell you the minutes. My notes were, you know, arrows and so just something to think about because I am starting to type it and leaving spaces for numbers.
I don't know if I can answer that. This is gonna sound crazy, but I don't know if I can answer this until the budget committee looks at them. Because the budget committee may look at them and the budget committee might say no to a whole bunch of them. And if that's the case, they're off the table altogether.
Are they?
Yep, cuz if the budget committee doesn't recommend any money for them, then they don't want the warrant. And well, unless we recommend any for them.
Right, which that doesn't very rarely, that really happens that. I'm just, I'm just tossing out ideas to make it as easy as possible um considering.
Yeah.
You said, Brian, about holding off until.
And that's next week, so.
Yeah, I like I said, I can see both sides of it. I I understand what you're saying about easier to do in the notes and stuff and keep, just keep things moving.
Yeah.
Um.
You have amendments, if you have amendments, then 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 the amendment fails and then you, yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just tossing out some ideas.
Yeah. No, I think it, like I say, it'll just be interesting to see how, depending on what makes it through next week and then we can see. When they're done their stuff, we can see, okay, we have. I don't know, say we have six of them that need to go forward, then we can figure out from there.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry to interrupt, do we decide on a budget workshop on five twelve at five P M?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you. And that's public meeting, so we'll post it.
Yep, yeah, it's just make sure it's posted, it's just a workshop, there'll be nothing, nothing voted on that, just a workshop. Onto lean foreclosure update.
Okay, press it. Actually, the, if you take the real estate collection one. This is only twenty four. I could not do twenty five because the second half is not. Due yet.
Right.
So you'd have most everybody. But twenty two, twenty three, there are no outstanding taxes. Um, we had, I don't remember, Brian, do you remember, was it eleven or thirteen potential foreclosures?
In our last meeting, I think it was down to four.
Everybody, everything has been paid in full. Um, I do believe that sending the. Letters beforehand. And then. After, as we got closer to the date helped. Um, so if it comes down to that, we'll do that again. Um, these are. Twenty. Fours, twen- so twenty. Three twenty four fiscal year.
Can I ask the difference between those highlighted and not highlighted?
You are looking at sewer.
That would help with it. My bad. Um, that's all I have then.
If you had your binder, it'd be an honor. Thank you, Carol. A couple of these may have. I printed these off two days ago um.
What was that? Yes, no?
I was thinking somebody paid. But I think that was a sewer.
Oh, really? Can I? Press one of the subset lists, please.
Yep. Um, I'll have to look. So. We contemplated, I know we chatted a little bit last night about sewer stuff um. We don't feel comfortable. We got, we have to figure out a a lean schedule. Um, so we're not needing. Well, this is no, real estate's fine. Well, when we move on to sewer, we'll talk about that. Um, so these aren't, there are some that are higher.
What do you mean?
On the real estate.
Yeah.
Um, but I think considering. A year ago, we had. Bills out as far as twenty two.
Right.
So. And I believe all of these have leans. We leaned.
How many is this? Thirty two.
Names.
Yep. Well, all we can do is see, keep sending the paperwork.
Yeah. And unfortunately, most everything that we send has to be certified, so.
An hour.
Ten dollars fees.
Ten dollars pop.
Thankfully, the ones that pay it. Pay off the things, pay their fees, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's good to know though. Sure.
Okay, um. So the ones that are highlighted are. More than one payment about behind. We did and, and these were. That's ten forty three. I don't know, uh, we just mailed out sewer bills this week. Um, and we've actually had a couple people come in and pay, already pay their bill. Um.
Pay their bill, but nothing passed.
Yeah, they're caught up.
Okay. So some of these are no longer on here.
A couple of them, yeah. We currently have right now three properties. That owe. And this, this number was before we mailed the bills out.
Right.
They currently owe um.
Over a thousand dollars.
Over a thousand dollars. We have three properties.
Were you saying this is thirty days behind?
No.
Yes, some of these, some of the ones that are highlighted are more than. One payment behind, so technically three months.
Right.
A ninety day bond.
No.
And then the.
Well, we just did the next bill, next billing.
Right.
So. So to back up with a little bit of info that we, like I said, I was gonna touch on tonight. Um, and I can pass this pe- piece of paper around this particular account. Whoever. Was here. Um, neglected to do any leans. From the middle of twenty one through all of twenty two. We cannot go back and lean those.
Right.
There was a lean put on in March of twenty four that encompassed. January. April and July of twenty three. However. It was put on before the full year, after the full year. But encompassed one payment that throws it off. I called Jay, I talked through my thought process, asked if I was overthinking it and they said no. That. If it, if we started to do a foreclosure on that and if it was contested.
We lose because it was done before the last payment was actually due. Oh, or we not actually do, but actually.
Yes.
Available to lean.
Yes. So it does, this account does have a lean on it. But if someone was to pay, they have to go back and start paying from the twenty one number, they're moving up, which is how we do all of our billing, so. Um, particularly those three accounts.
Yep.
Which are. Two consumer, one business. I can tell you what line, hang on.
No, I got it. Yeah, we got it.
Um, page three at the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Are in the, so these are all in the same boat. They're, they're, they were missed, we can't go back and lean. So. Just so you have a little bit of info there.
So when can we lean though?
They are lean.
Right.
So what do we have to do, release it and re-lean them?
No, I don't think you can go back and re-lean them because you're past the year. Utility billings are after three months, but no more than a year. So, but we also aren't comfortable. Putting a bill out in Feb- in January. It's technically due in February cuz you have thirty days to pay before interest starts. The next bill comes out in April, we don't wanna lean it. I don't even think we can legally lean it in April because. It has from January to February. That it's a, utility is a very fine line.
Right. So. Something could send into the, you know, vulgar brain. So they're lean, so we can't foreclose because of.
We, we can't foreclose because of that sniffer on the. March twenty fourth lien.
Right.
So we would have to wait until. Eighteen months after the December lien that we put on.
I said. But in that process of that eighteen month period. They're still liable for the. Oldest payment.
First, yes, absolutely.
That's why I was trying to get at.
Yeah. So technically, we can't foreclose for another eighteen months.
Seventeen months. It's in their best interest to pay it and not keep paying interest out.
You think so?
So all of these bills were just sent out, right?
Um, I believe, I believe he printed this. After we mailed the bills.
Okay.
Now, me looking at this. You just filled out twenty one thousand dollars. Under twenty four customers, the first one.
Before he printed this, Aaron said that we had eight thousand dollars in past due.
Correct.
Yes.
That's very, very bottom line.
Okay.
This is the complete going of the second one.
Yeah.
Right.
So the ones that are highlighted. Um, are past due. More than one bill. So past, they didn't pay the January bill.
The past due by one thirty days.
Yes.
So simply put, we built out twenty one thousand five seventy change. We are due because of overdue bills.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, we have over thirty thousand.
Eight thousand dollars in past due.
Most of them are under four. We have a couple at four hundred. Like I said, these numbers are a little bit different, but um, most of them are under a hundred.
Now, with this being said. When you send out a lien, you don't get any response from a mortgage company?
Ninety nine percent of the people.
Oh, no.
Not, well, not only that, we don't have mortgage company information.
Yeah, but when you send it to Oxford County, Oxford County gets, um, that that mortgage company gets a notice. Yes, they do.
No, not on some, not according to uh what we have. Same thing we run into with tax bills. If we don't have. If you don't come in and say, I have a mortgage company. We don't have it in the computer, so therefore it doesn't go to their mortgage holder. If we don't have it in the system. They don't, it, it doesn't generate a bill for that. But on the flip side of that, that also raises. It doubles the certified mailing fees.
Right, but so.
No, I don't think it is Oxford County sends it to the mortgage company.
Well, that's what I was just saying. So you're, you're saying that because mortgages are registered with the county, this should trigger.
We've never been, we've never been told that.
I'm just telling you, that's how it works for a while.
I'll have to reach out to Sherry and ask her.
In the past, I called a mortgage company. Cuz they don't wanna lean on their property, so they, they pay.
And just tack it on, so that would be.
Did so much work to make out the lean, that's even though I bypass that. Step. And call.
Mortgage holder and call up and say, you don't wanna lean on that property.
Because of utilities still.
Yeah, see, I wasn't aware that she, that Oxford County did that. But what also happens to the people who don't have a mortgage?
Well, we chose that.
We face that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's very rare.
I do not.
And she also doesn't have public sewer.
That's why I was explaining this out.
Yeah, yeah. I will reach out to Sherry tomorrow.
But the bottom lines, we have eight thousand dollars that that sewer file could use.
Yep.
Yeah.
It needs. So.
And I'll, I can reflect in question.
Well.
Without you doing a tremendous amount of paperwork.
I don't think there is a way without phone paperwork, unfortunately.
What's sad in my mind isn't. That's what Little More Paul said.
That's right.
What's, what's sad in my mind and, and it's not that, yes, it's sad that there's three or four people who are over a thousand. What's sad is they're ninety dollars, you know.
But I, it all keeps doubling.
Absolutely.
Well, yes, but how many of these seasons do we have? I mean. And those.
I don't think the season is a problem.
Some of them are.
So, the bills just went out the other day.
Yeah.
So what I would do is if you reach out to Sherry and see, figure that out on that end of things. I will drop the letter on behalf of the board. As we are trustees of the sewer. I will drop the letter to those that owe anything over a hundred dollars and.
We'll mail them out.
We'll have those mailed out sometime next week.
Uh, regular mail?
No, certified mail, and I know it's gonna cost us ten dollars base.
My question, I would, my suggestion is go regular mail.
Okay.
Because they'll get it.
They answer it better.
Because if they're not home, so say they are working, they have three opportunities, and then it gets sent back and they don't get them.
No, we can do regular mail.
Or they ignore them.
But now we're saying this. Anyone's watching, no.
That's okay. Now, we'll uh. Any other thoughts on that?
No, I agree. I'll help you drop that out. No, I agree, I'll help you draft that up.
Okay, all right, we'll, uh, we'll get something drafted up, and we'll shoot it out to everybody, and try to get that sent next week. Try to get, hopefully, some payments coming in to correct that.
Sean, if, so you, if Sherry sends them to the mortgage holders. So we send those leans over, and Sherry sends them to the mortgage holders. Why are we, we, this, we shouldn't even be in this position?
We shouldn't be.
That's why I've never heard of that.
That, that's an experience we've had in the past.
Okay. I'm anxious to find out about that.
You, you should have. A name of lien holder. And I don't know why you don't have it.
Which we can get by going on the registry deeds, so what we can do is go through. The list of addresses and pull up registry, actually, we can pull the lien holders right off of that.
I'm guessing some of these don't have mortgages.
Yeah, right, and, and there, there will be some.
Yeah.
There's quite a few, I think, that don't.
There may be some that do.
Right, no, I agree.
And if they're a renter. We won't know.
Like, they always have to look the addresses up, see what Sherry says, and then maybe we may have, we may have to look some of the address stuff, see.
Yep.
Are, are definitely.
Yeah. That's gonna be the only way to figure it out.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts on those updates?
No.
It's a tough situation.
It is.
Anything on your end, Christine?
With respect to the sewer leads?
Yes.
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, um, other business, um, Veterans Monument.
Um, we discussed last night at the budget meeting. It's been a concern for. I guess I could say several years now, because our current Veterans Monument, the design, it has a plaque on the back. And you cannot add names to it, and we know there are a number of veterans from Canton that are not on that current monument. It has been. Sad, well, maybe we just do a generic monument to all veterans. My personal feeling on that is. It doesn't seem quite fair to me for the ones who are not on the current monument, that they're never gonna get their name recognized. They're just gonna be part of a blanket, thank you. I would rather look at one similar size to what we have, but where the names are etched on as. Appropriate. I mean, I'm willing to. Shop around for some prices on something and see. And my thought was, if that is something that could potentially come out of the community, community. Say that ten times fast tonight, Community Benefit Fund, so. Cause I just, like I said, I understand, you know, the generic one is obviously cheaper, but. I feel it's more respectful to name is on it. So, and criteria has been, they lived in the town of Canton at the time of their enlistment and service.
But not passed away, correct?
They don't have to be passed away, no.
Yeah, I'm gonna be getting prices, yeah.
Uh, we have a rough number right now, but obviously, if it's big enough, then you're gonna have. A lot of them have room for three columns and a number of names, so.
I think, you know, we put it out on Facebook in the board, in case some fall through, by chance, we don't know.
Yeah.
Or if there's a question, then, like, some we have with Ways Across America, then they have to provide proof.
Okay, I will, um, work on that for the next day, if, and. See what I can come up with.
Sounds good. All right, uh, next item I have, um, talking to budget last night, um, we looked at the general government budget. Um, and we were questioning if the selectmen were going to ask for an increase, um. Currently, the selectmen get three thousand dollars apiece per year. Um, I know a couple of us have looked around a little bit at surrounding towns to see comparisons. There are some that are significantly higher, there are some that are a couple thousand higher, there are some that are a couple thousand lower. So, I don't think, we used to be kinda in the middle of the road, we're not quite in the middle anymore, we're starting to fall a little behind. Um, so rather than one or two of us making the decision, I wanted to throw it in front of the group and see what people's thoughts were. Um, I believe the quote, uh, Hartford, I believe is five thousand apiece. Um.
Carthage is right in that same ballpark as well.
Yeah, and Carthage is a little different, because their head selectman gets a touch more, because they're only a three person board. So their, theirs is divided up a little bit differently. Um, but like I said, I wanted to throw it out for discussion and see what everybody's thoughts were, so we could take it back to. Um, the Budget Committee next week. Or we can think about it, table it, and come back and bring it back. When we do our budget, but I just wanted to get it out there and see what everybody's thoughts were.
Okay.
Have you guys experienced that? Listen to that. I think you guys do a lot of meetings, a lot of work, and I realize.
It is crazy, isn't it?
Yeah.
I don't believe there's been an increase since twenty thirteen. I think we started at about fifteen.
When I first started in twenty thirteen, it was less.
So in, in the next year or so.
It was either fourteen or fifteen that I believe the amount went up, I'd have to look back to be sure, but.
Been a while.
Yeah.
I will say that I didn't start doing this for the money, because clearly, that would be foolish. On a number of levels, but. We do. I'm not trying to pat ourselves on the back for whoever's listening, but we do put in. Far more time than what you're seeing us on camera.
Absolutely.
And. It's a little tough to swallow three thousand dollars for the amount of hours we're doing.
It's a thankless job.
It is a very thankless job, and no matter the amount of money, it's, that's always gonna be part of it, but.
If you haven't had an increase since two thousand thirteen, it's time.
Yes, I've been on since seventeen, it's been the same the whole time, yeah.
You know, it was somewhere fourteen or fifteen, I think, that we did the increase.
Whatever you guys recommend, but I'm also on board with the chairman and. The co-chairman, he gives more money than. But that, that's just normal practice, I mean. Our. What do I call them?
Us these?
Yeah, what our trust is, they're gonna get different monies.
Yeah, I personally don't, I'm not worried about getting more than anybody else, I just, I think, as a board, I think it's something that. We haven't done for a while, and we've kinda held the line, and we did talk about it a couple of years ago, and it was now we're gonna. Kinda hold the line and try to keep stuff down, I think. I think it's time to at least try it and see if we can get a little bit more, um, like I say, the last few years, especially, I would say the last three years, um. There's been a lot of additional meetings and things between, um.
FEMA.
Different audits, FEMA meetings, um. Been a lot of additional stuff that we've dealt with, that I, I think it would be a benefit to anybody involved, I mean, I've got one year left. But I think, not knowing who's coming in the future, I think it would be good to try to give them, um. A benefit, instead of the table, and.
The way I look at it, you do it on someone, it's like Brian, it's like. You know, figures, night reading, and stuff like that, and that's why. That's why they give those positions, but. That's just main thing that I have. I think what. I don't know what you guys think, and I don't figure that's, that's basically decided.
I, I was just, my kinda thought was if Hartford gets five, I was just gonna see throwing out five and see what that was, I. And I'm, like I say, I'm completely open for discussion, and I was just, it was a thought.
Job's not for the faint of heart.
What are your thoughts, Christine?
I think ultimately, it's gonna be voted on at town meeting one way or the other, so. Makes sense to me to at least put it on the agenda.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I feel the same, if she does.
Okay.
All right, we'll do a little math before the budget meeting next week and see what we can come up with and go from there. Any other, other business?
I have one, unless you want it under town office.
We can do reports and other, or, yeah, I don't care, we can either do it now, or we can do it after.
Okay, um. At the last meeting, of course, we had our computers installed today. Um, I'm just gonna put that was an interesting event. And, but they're in, and Aaron and I would like. We had asked about extra monitors, as you guys said, no from the community, or from the funding that we did it, not the Community Benefit Fund. We would like. For transparency purposes, to ask the board if it's for permission to spend our budget on two more monitors. We have the money in our budget, we've been saving for it. Um, but because of last meeting's conversation, I wanted to put it out there.
My question is, why the need for two?
Because there's a lot of times that we have to bounce screens, and to split screen puts them too small. There's a lot of times, like, I'm working on budget numbers and warrant at the same time. Or.
And you don't wanna minimize and pull back?
Nope. It's too, it's too easy to make a mistake, too easy to transpose something, um. We've got the money.
We have the money now, but we're in March, I mean, that's.
But, but we budgeted for it, we've, we've, I mean, we've been budgeting for it.
I'm hesitant.
So are you saying two or two apiece?
Two, we have two, we want two more. Normally, I, I'm gonna be upfront, normally, I would have ordered them, because it's our budget line and.
It, but it happened.
Right, but you, nobody questions when we order paper, order this, order that.
Well, paper and a monitor is a little different price.
Believe it or not, not much.
So, I guess my thing would be. Why not one monitor and use the one that's in the.
Well, that was an option, I didn't even think about that one.
That, that's almost brand new, sitting in there, and I.
Honestly, I think it might be brand new, because one.
But you also said at the last meeting not to go two different sizes, because it wouldn't. Separate.
So what size monitors are you buying, when?
Same as what's on the computers that we just got, that's what we were looking at.
But those are different size than your desk monitors anyways.
Right, and I didn't, I wasn't aware of that, because originally, we talked about taking those monitors, putting our desk monitors on the, on the counter. Um, but.
You're two and a half inches bigger.
Right, and I, but I mean, to, to doing the configuration, if you think it will work. Keeping, having two that are similar sizes.
I mean, it'll work, it's just, yeah, I mean, that's the way to do it and say, well, leave.
Right, and that's, but I'm just going by what you guys all said last time was, no, you don't want monitors of different sizes, because it might work.
I, that's, that's all it's on.
I mean, and actually, in reality, now that you just leaned forward.
I would say, yeah.
That's a twenty four inch too. So.
And it's not.
That's a twenty four, and that's a twenty four, there's two.
Right.
Let's try, let's try.
Yeah, nobody uses that one, so it's certainly a good one.
Okay, we'll play around with it, if you guys, if you guys snag a nose, we'll play around with it, but.
Because the meetings aren't being run the way we planned when we bought that setup, I would say. Still, I will steal the one out of the closet, see what happens.
Okay, we'll do that then.
Try those and see, see how it works.
I'm glad you leaned, because I.
Well, Brian. Scary, he's on the same way, I just lie him a lot of time.
Yeah, I don't wanna be in the middle.
I just saw you lean over, I'm like, wait a minute, I never even go to that one.
It's one of those things we look at all the time, but look over it.
Right.
Yeah, okay, we'll play around with them and see if we can get it to work then.
Yeah, okay.
No, that was easy. I need a.
Are you getting one new?
We may not have to, because if that one matches, we can do those two on one and bump one to the other desk.
They're both HDMI connections, so they both will work. It's just a matter of plugging them.
Yeah, I know, that's what I hear.
The only thing that might. Yeah, we'll have to look and see, we'll have to look and see what the connections are on the computers, because.
I hear Charlie Ross teacher going wah, 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 that's what I heard all day long today.
Depends on what the new computers have for plugging in them, the old ones had two slots, what's the same cable, the new ones might have two different cables. Which, I, that one won't take the new brand of cable, it would only be the one in the closet, probably. But.
He can fix it.
I think we can get by with at least one. We'll have to see, that'll be fine for the other one, but. Approval of the warrants, AP warrant number eighty seven, one hundred and thirty one thousand seven sixty six thirty nine. Must be the school payment. Uh, ninety fifteen thousand two thirteen, excuse me, two oh three twenty seven. Uh, number ninety two, fifteen thousand seventy four fifteen, number ninety three, thirty four hundred. Payroll warrant number eighty six, six thousand one ninety five fifty eight. Eighty nine, five thousand five thirty two, eighty one. Ninety one, four thousand nine eleven sixty eight, and ninety four, six thousand seven seventy three thirty five. And I get a motion.
She'll approve as read.
I have a motion from Christine, a second from Carol. Sean.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Yes, Christine.
Yes.
Motion carries. Public comment.
Whoa, I can't.
Ah, all right, we'll go quick before someone comes up with something, uh, committee reports. We just talked about budget, and that takes that off the list.
I have nothing other than, we have the first episode of our working. Finally, after three failed visits by. Someone and a half hour visit from somebody else, and they fixed it.
Thank you, that reminds me of something else we need to talk about.
Ask you that.
Yep. Um. Uh, and the highway guys, it sounds like they'll have to be out again this weekend.
I know, yeah, they're loving life, uh.
Yep, they've done a great job.
They have, and they took, um, they've done a couple days of clock time, just to.
Yeah.
Recharge.
They, they knew that they were gonna be out.
Yeah.
Anything from you often?
Um, like I said, sewer bills went out, crier is almost ready to be printed. Um, we're gonna put in ads, uh, ad requests again, so if people wanna do ads in the crier. Um. Paul worked with us a couple weeks ago. And that was always fun, we got a lot of things caught up, he shows, he loves to show us, show us stuff, so that, that's helpful. Um. The transfer station reports. Um, are both done, the recycling report is in, and the solid, wait a minute. One is in and one's going in tomorrow, now that you've found my scan files, um. I think. I think that's it.
Thank you for getting, dating the numbers on those.
It, it wasn't so much the numbers, it was a lot of other stuff that I had to dig around for, um, numbers are, just so you, everyone knows. Uh, the numbers are not, the, the old forms are not at the transfer station, um, I did check into that, but Vera from. Wherever Vera's from, DEP, somewhere at the state, she was very helpful. Done.
All right. All right, uh, two other others that I forgot to chat about when we were doing other business, um. We are looking into shopping around for oil delivery company. Um, the one that we're currently using, we've had a little bit of trouble with, um, so just as a heads up to the board that we're looking. Doing a little bit of shopping on the oil and the things.
I mean, you can just say that they'll offer us a pre-buy.
Uh, we might as well at the same time.
Yep.
Um, although I know two different companies who have done pre-buys that are now saying, uh, plus ten percent.
Right, but I mean, even at that, chances are we'll make out ahead of the game.
It's very possible. Um, we also have the, uh, when I'm on that topic, um, the fire department has started working. Or getting diesel down at the highway garage, so they have, they just started, um, they're keeping track. And there's a clipboard in each, or documentation piece in each truck, keep track of how many gallons, and then. And then we're working on a procedure in the office of whether we do it once a month or once a quarter, how we're gonna. Do the transfer between, um, when the bill comes into the highway garage and just making sure that fire picks up their gallons that they purchased, but. Um. So we're just working on the internal procedure for that, but moving forward. Um, the other FYI is Archie's, um, have told us that are, will be hopefully coming into our next meeting. We'll have that coming in. As you said, the messenger sent me, he said he was going to come into our next meeting.
I didn't.
Get it?
Sure.
Okay. Well, we need to look into Archie's because they're concerned because the amount that we're paying is significantly less than what they're actually. Charging or getting charged to dispose of the trash, so, um.
And that contract.
So basically, uh, well, that's, we've looked for it, they can't find it, the most recent contract is the twenty eighteen, which expired in twenty twenty three.
I know we signed one.
That does have a clause in it about a three percent increase for each year that we add on. Um, the budget that I built for. Um, twenty six, I built it off of the number that they told us, um, last week. So, the budget, you will see when we get to that, it's a significant increase. Um, but we need to actually meet with them and figure out where we're at, so hopefully, he will come into our next meeting and we can chat about it.
I will call Jerry.
I'm gonna give you that back, so.
Thank you, it's a copy, so.
Okay.
It was a good copy.
Somebody have a contract again?
Nope.
We have the twenty eighteen.
He came in and asked, he's, he's been great, um, he came in and said we have a little bit of a problem. And told me what it was, and I said, well, did you, cause we've been talking to each other, I said, did you find a contract? And he said, no, and we didn't have it either, but Aaron did find, like I said, the little. Extra that says we can renew automatically for one year terms, um.
So, my question is, are those contracts coming via email, or are they coming via?
We've looked.
Yeah, we tried going back in both.
I went back to twenty, did we charge info? Yep. We both have access to info.
Yeah.
Um.
My luck.
Doesn't make any sense.
Nope, we've hunted and hunted and hunted, and they have as well.
But I think the the thing is, it's time to either, I mean, obviously, we need to meet with them and see where things are at, but maybe we need to, um. Maybe the possibility of, do we go out to bid again? Is there anyone? And the vote, um, there are a couple others.
Okay.
So, I mean, it may be time to. Obviously, see what they have, but go out a little bit too.
Doesn't hurt, I mean.
Sometimes sharpening pencils makes things.
Yep, well, our EMA director recommends that we rebid the contract, so.
And what?
That we rebid the contracts, so, I think we'll probably follow his recommendation. Um. All right, uh, there's no other questions or comments, um, we need to go into executive session for one MRSA four oh five six eight for a personnel discussion.
You want my cockies? To warm it up?
We need a motion.
Right first, Dr. John.
You're gonna get a motion? What's that?
Nothing, it's just one. Make, uh, make a motion to go into executive session, sorry.
Right.
Her blah blah.
I have a motion and a second.
Who did the second?
I did.
Oh, okay.
John? Carol?
Yes.
Um, yes, Christine?
Yes.
All right. So we are going to take a two minute break, and then we'll go into executive session. And Christine, I'll probably just call you on speakerphone.
Okay.
Cause we'll have to shut the Zoom down for that.
Gotcha.
All right, thank you.